This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. We're back in person this evening. So I welcome you back to City Hall. Our, we do have a forum this evening. So being that we do have a forum, I'll call the City of Manassia County Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Good by our American citizens, America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God. In the logo of the United States of America.
Do we have the roll place?
Alderman Langdon? Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomgrotty?
Here.
Alderman Tedgrotty?
Here.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenick?
Here.
All are present.
We do have a developer here with us this evening to make a presentation. So if there's no objections from the council, I'd like to ask that we move all the way down to action items. Item I, item five, that Atkins Development Group. Hello, Steve is here to speak with us this evening. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, members of staff. And thank you, members of the general public and residents of Manassia. My name is Steve Atkins. I'm with Atkins Development Group. Also associated with Atkins Building Group and also Epcun Communities. The distinction is Atkins Development Group will own this development. Atkins Building Group will build them. Epcun Communities is a sales and marketing partner, although they will not have ownership in this project. Aaron, you want to slide to the next screen? So what we're talking about tonight is going to be a hundred and two Mott community that would be in the southeast part of the city. Or I guess that's what you would call it. Just north of Lake Winnebago, just north of Highway 10 and off of Kernan Avenue. We intend these to be built out over three to four years. This will be a community geared to a 55-plus clientele, although it's not exclusive to a 55-plus clientele. You don't have to be 55 to look back there. But if you're very young, you might find your neighbors boring. But this will be a very nice community. The average square foot of the homes will probably be anywhere from 2,000 square foot to 3,500 square foot. So one thing I want to make abundantly clear, these are not small homes at all. These are very, very nice homes. We primarily building the Green Bay market. We're a custom builder. Most of the homes that we build in Green Bay go anywhere from 500,000 to a million. Okay, these homes are every bit as nice as our very nicest custom homes. They're just geared to a 55-plus demographic. Mostly ranch plans, minimum of steps. And then what we're also selling is lifestyle. Okay, we're going to have a very, we'll get to it a little later, but we're going to have a very, very nice clubhouse. Okay, which is going to be in the vicinity of 3,000 square foot. We'll have an exercise facility in it, a very nice club room where people can reserve the room, you know, for parties, for their friends, family, and things of that nature. And just for gatherings of the residents. We'll also have a large pool. We'll have pickleball courts. And then we'll also have some other minor amenities interspersed throughout the development. The other thing that's key to this development is that we really want to get across the idea that this is a place they can go to have a more laid-back lifestyle. We're going to plow the snow for them, okay? We're going to cut the grass. We're going to keep the bushes trimmed. We're going to keep everything weighted. Minor repairs, we'll take care of it. So that's the type lifestyle that we're intending to sell. To my knowledge, there's nothing quite like this in Manassia. And we'll talk a little bit more about this in depth later. So talking about the HOA amenities, just for review, we'll have a fully maintained clubhouse, a resort pool, pickleball courts, an ice common area, snow removal, professional lawn care, and professional landscaping. Aaron, can you back up one slide to the second slide, if you would? Okay, as far as density, we're going to have slightly less than slightly more than two homes per acre. And to put that in context, I believe you have a Lexington community over in the same area. It would be comparable to that community. These are single-family homes. Each individual owner owns his own lot and owns their own home. There's no, people may want to call these condos just because of the clubhouse and the pool and some of the amenities. But legally, there's no condo aspect to this. Everyone owns their home. Everyone owns their lot. And we can go on to the next slide here. We really want to sell the idea of walkability. There is a city trail that is planned through the community. The beginnings of that are already there. At some point, we hope to be tied into the Manassia Trail System. And we intend to have sidewalks on at least one side of the street throughout the development. One, Aaron. Natural space. We'll have two large ponds, extensive green space, extensive common and private landscaping. We already touched upon HOA provided landscape maintenance, and we already touched upon the walkability. Often when developments are brought up like this, people are concerned about how it might affect the schools. Well, it's my understanding that this development is within the Appleton School District. Okay, there'll be almost zero children within our development. I can't promise that there's going to be none, but less than 5% of the families will have any children. And even if that, they might be weekend children, things like that. Okay, now, the good news is, okay, we're not going to add any burden to the school system. With their taxes, we're going to, you know, be providing significant income to the school district. I know that doesn't concern people directly in this room as much because it's the city of Manassia. But among neighbors and that, that's something that's often brought up. One, Aaron. Traffic, another thing that's often brought up in new developments. These type developments only create a third as much of traffic as a traditional subdivision. Reason being, most of the people are either semi-retired or retired. They travel a lot, okay? Surprisingly, people 55 and older, it's common that they will only have one car, not two. So you'll have significantly less traffic than you would in a traditional subdivision. And then we're also hopeful that, you know, we can get a head at West, you know, that would keep traffic off Kernan. Like I said, overall, traffic shouldn't be a concern. One. And we've talked about the HOA amenities, just a little PR there. I don't know if everyone can see the graphics. Maybe better on your computers. But this is exactly how the clubhouse will look. This is a computer-generated illustration, and that's exactly how it will look. The pool behind it will look exactly like that. And then there's a shot of what the inside of the clubhouse will look. So like I said, this is a top-of-the-line community, something that everyone can be proud to live next door to. One. Some pictures to share. Property management, okay? During construction and until the last home is sold, my company will manage the property. Okay, it's actually my daughter who will be the property manager. She has 15 years' experience in managing large developments like this, actually all over the country. Beyond when we're done with the community, okay? At that point, we will turn it over to an HOA, okay? Which will employ a professional property manager, someone like Pefferly or someone like that, who will manage the day-to-day after that. Now, it's not like everyone can change the rules after we move out. We're leaving them with about an 80-page list of covenants that would be very difficult to change. So, you know, don't worry about the development going to hell, you know, after, after we leave. Okay, as far as the commitment to get this project done. First of all, we have already bought a significant part of the property with options to buy the rest of the property by the end of the year. Let's see, three of the streets are already in enough for 19 lots. It's our intention, you know, assuming that we get your blessing and we can get our permits through city channels, that we would like to start the first of the homes, actually start construction next month, if that's possible. But what I'm trying to get through is our commitment to the project. As I said, we've already bought land. We've already got plans. We're ready to start construction as soon as possible. All of our financing is already in place. This isn't speculative where I'm going to have to go out and interview 10 banks or whatever. The financing's already there. In fact, it's signed and closed. So we're in good shape there. We accept to be sold out within three to four years. We will have a sales and marketing staff on site at least six days a week. This isn't something we're going to show up for two hours on Sunday and hope for the best. We're going to have a lot of commitment to have these sold quickly. And people can stop out there any day of the week and they'll be able to meet a salesperson. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to do a lot of social media. We have an absolutely killer website that's not totally active yet. We just have a teaser version of it up so far. But we'll be doing a lot of events, you know, mingling dinners, you know, where, you know, we can invite people to a dinner or cocktails or something like that to introduce them to the community. So, you know, a lot of marketing and sales horsepower behind our effort. You can change it again there? We talked about financing already. One. Okay, the benefits to Manassia, okay? These numbers might stagger you, but it's true. I think it is probably not a secret to anyone is that building costs have gone up significantly in the last year. And it's not just a temporary thing. I've been in this business my whole temporary life, and I'm aware of all the forces that are driving those. Costs aren't going back down. If someone says they're going to wait three months and wait for the prices to go down, they're going to be waiting a long time. There's just so many market forces that are driving. So we have 102 lots, and we expect the average sale to be between 450,000 and 500,000. So what that will mean is at least that market value, I know market value is different than tax value, but at least we'll be creating 45 to 50 million dollars of new market value for the benefit of City Manassia. And that would be a pretty big tax increment. The best part, okay, we're not asking for TIPS, okay? We're not asking for a city handout. We understand, talking to Don and, you know, the city staff here, that you have, you know, a good working agreement with developers, a standard developers agreement. That is, it's a good partnership where the city helps a little bit with financing infrastructure, meaning the streets and sewer and things like that. But like I said, through the, I'm trying to think the right word, the assessment, okay? The city would be paid back in very short order. So like I said, once again, not looking for a handout from the city. Finally, we're going to wrap up here. I just want to get across that this is going to be an actual, absolute showpiece development. Something that the Manassia could be very proud of. One thing I will say, so the sales and marketing partner I have, Epcun Communities. We chose to work with them because the plans already exist. They already got a killer sales and marketing program. They already have a great website, which are things that would take me a year to a year and a half to develop on my own, which is all non-productive time. But we should be able to hit the ground running. This is going to happen. Epcun has done over 400 of these communities. It's partners with different developers on around the country since 1985. None of them has ever failed. This particular segment of the market, in the building industry, the building industry is gangbusters anyway. But of all the things that are going well, this particular segment is going better than any of them. You got anything else here I want to share? Here's a picture of, you know, the proposed plat. As I indicate, if you want to visualize this, this is just north of Highway 10 and just east of Kernan Avenue. This plat's not final, but hopefully it's at least close. With that, I thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to field any questions anyone might have.
I, you mentioned the cost of materials and stuff like that. Did you find a problem getting materials? There's so many people that are complaining they can't get building materials. Everything's backed order, but do you have some kind of magic network?
It's like being, it's all about being established. We've been in business over 25 years. Within my industry, I'm probably one of the most well-known people in this state. Our credit history is excellent. I'm not going to say we don't have difficulty getting it, but we ultimately do get it.
Thank you. Do you want to, we're at a preliminary, preliminary phase right now. Do you want to explain to the council what we're looking for tonight, and then we'll figure out for questions?
Yeah, so what we are, where we're at with Atkins Development Group is we're still kind of pushing through this preliminary phase. So part of it is, it's kind of some buy-in from the county council that, you know, Atkins should continue to, you know, invest dollars, substantial dollars in engineering and conceptual design and marketing out here. Because we do have to get into a preliminary plat phase. I don't know if you touched on it, but we would be looking to have a PUD over top of the site, so planning the development. The type of development with the clubhouse and the pools isn't allowed by right within a single-family residential district. So some of those things are why we would go with that planning and development process. So again, with some, you know, general buy-in, again, from the engineers, or, excuse me, from the county council tonight, I think, you know, Mr. Atkins and myself and staff and their team will continue to look at finalizing a preliminary plat spring through, finalizing a planning and development document. And then that will all come back through the process from plan commission to county council, and then the final plat as well. So is that, that's kind of the logistics there?
That's our understanding.
So, so yeah, I think, you know, asking questions today from the council, you know, if there's concerns, this or another, or, you know, if this all kind of sounds acceptable, then we'll just kind of keep continuing to chug along. We'll see, you know, in the coming month, month and a half, you know, the preliminary plat come through, the development agreement, kind of our, again, standard development agreement with the deferred assessment, as well as the planning and development documentation. So I think that just about covers it.
Please ask questions.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
So when Lexington came in and built all their homes, they gave us a price. And that price has held pretty good. What's the price of your homes?
How much will they sell for?
Yeah, how much would I have to pay to buy one?
I can't tell you exactly because it's going to depend upon what people choose to put in their homes. But generally speaking, as I suggested, the average sale price will be between 450 and 500,000.
Okay, thank you.
And that number might surprise a lot of people. But here in Wisconsin, as far as new construction, the average price on new construction is getting very close to 400,000. Right. That's average.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will this, will your development be driven by lot sales? Or are you planning to build homes and then sell the homes?
Okay, we will not sell an individual lot, okay? So if someone comes in and says, "I want to buy a lot, and I want to consider building in two years," that's not something we're interested in, okay? Someone, we'll put some spec homes up, some ones in other words that will be market homes, that someone come in, can come in and get their financing and move in in a month, okay? Otherwise, you know, we'll meet with people, decide what they want in their house, and we'll build it specifically for them. The lot is included with the house, but we have no interest in selling lots. We have no interest in selling lots to other builders. This will be 100% controlled by us.
So how far and wide does your marketing go then? What, besides 55 and older, what is your target area that you'll market to? Geographic area?
As far as geographic area, I mean, it's going to start locally and radiate out from there. But the footprint of the website is actually nationwide. Let me give you an example. We have a teaser version of our website already up. I got a call from a couple in Chicago last Friday. And they said, "Hey, we're semi-retired, getting close to retirement. We'd love going to Door County. We'd love going to the up-north part of Wisconsin. But we still want to be close to the grandchildren in Chicago and things like that." And it really struck us that Appleton would be the perfect spot. And how soon can we move in? And I had, I had to explain to them that we haven't even started construction. And he says, "Well, I'd hope to be in the summer. Is it possible to be in by fall?" I said, "Fall would be a possibility." But I certainly see that as being not abnormal at all. But my marketing partner, Epcun, told me the vast majority of the people who will move into these will be coming here within, will live already within 15 miles.
And where can we go in the region to see other work that you've done?
As far as the work I've done, it's not this specific product. But the best place to look is Hoard.
We have a very nice website, too, if you want.
I did check it out today. I checked out the website. Director Schrader, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Director Schrader, you might be able to help me with this question, too. The pond, the tension pond in this specific site, do we anticipate those being managed and owned by the homeowners association once that's established, or would those stay with the city?
I'll let Don answer her.
Yeah, so the existing pond, the big one that you see on there, is still owned by Woodland Development. So Atkins Group, I believe, would be looking to purchase that because Woodland Development would be completely sold out of this area then. Part of the development agreement and part of the direction that city staff is looking at going with all the ongoing due to our requirements for stormwater and management of these ponds is likely to have that become a city-owned pond. And that would be called out within the development agreement. Again, we collect stormwater impact fees from residents so we can actively maintain those ponds. So that is something that that's the direction we're going. But it certainly does something to go through the development agreement process.
And that's my understanding as well.
Thank you. And then some of, at least some of the backbone water and sewer has already been installed, correct?
On the first 19 lots.
The 19 lots, so kind of up on the northwest corner of that plat, has already been installed.
And those costs will continue to be recovered through the deferred assessment policy?
So we actually, yeah, we do have a deferred assessment policy on those. They're returned either at a minimum of four a year or at the time of sale. I believe Mr. Atkins and the Atkins Group have already purchased nine of those. At least two seem finished and closed. But those payments are already coming and trickling back in. So there is that portion of funds that is already opening back up.
And then I recall from my time on the plan commission that there was a plat that came through with the, I'll say, the former owners now. Is that all going to change? Or will some of it stay the same?
The existing 19 lots, it's the developers kind of thought to keep that the same, so not really plat it. Couple of lots on the south side of the cul-de-sac, I think it's a signet fort, would, might have to be, might have to be modified slightly to make room for the pond. But otherwise, the other lots would remain the same. And then they do, they are showing the clubhouse and the community amenities on two of those, first 19 lots, correct?
That is correct.
Right, thank you.
Welcome. One thing I think that would be good news to everyone in the room is the nature of our development is the city is going to recoup their investment significantly faster than they would have otherwise.
Alderman, correct?
Yeah, I, question first. Director Schrader, you've been working with Mr. Atkins here for a while now on this. I just want to get warm fuzzy out of you. I mean, things are coming through you for guidance, and you have to come back to us as your, as us. How you feel the process is going so far? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just.
No, I, again, I think it's a unique process. So there has been some time from start to finish, you know, to where we're at today. Because again, one, there hasn't been the relationship that we've built. In addition, it's a unique project with a PUD. So there's a, there's a little added layer of unknown about, you know, the process that we have. So there is a little bit of extra time there. But again, you know, with the Atkins Group actually starting to purchase the original 19 lots from Mr. Higgins, I think that gives a good indication to us that, you know, he's willing to commit and spend dollars today. And I believe it's fall that they're looking at purchasing or try to close the rest of it. So basically, between now and fall, we're going to be in high gear moving forward and getting all the documentation approved so he can close on the remaining portion of the lot.
Thank you, and I enjoy the fact that it's a non-TIP-type funding, so.
I can be a little bit more specific. Okay, so we've already purchased nine lots, okay? Our purchase agreement dictates that we're going to purchase an additional 10 lots on October 1st, okay? And then pending city approval, of course, of our development plan, we would purchase, and I know I don't have the exact amount here, but I'm going to round off, the remaining 35 undeveloped acres, we would purchase by the end of the year.
And there has been, so a lot of this area struggled to get developed because of some of the wetland issues. A lot of that, those issues have already been resolved. It's just a matter of tying those together as far as how we look at it from a development agreement to deferred assessment and bringing that forward. So again, those details we'll be working through in the development agreement and the preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to our new partnership.
Thank you.
And I hope that you become even more involved in our community and. And I'm looking at this project and I think I can speak for most of us here. But we're very pleased and we wish you the very best in business here.
Thank you very much. Dan, do you have a sales brochure to give this gentleman?
You're getting close to that age.
I'm about that age. I remember our ethics training we just had.
Any other questions? Otherwise, you know, you've been very generous with your time and I thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation.
It's probably good to have some sort of motion come to the floor and it could be something to the effect of direct staff to continue to work with Atkins Group on the Woodland Lakes Concept and bring forward documents to permit the concept, including the development agreement, the preliminary class and P U D or something.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Well, you got to make it first.
Yeah, I have your district.
Randy, all right. I'll make a motion to, um, to accept the conceptual plan by Atkins Development Group LLC, Woodland Lake College, and that Sam continues to work to progress with this agreement. And we, um, look forward to, uh, working with Mr. Atkins and his group.
Second? Motion second? Haley, are you there? Can we have a roll call vote?
Haley?
I am here. Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgotti?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgrotty?
Aye.
Alderman Arpella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
The Alderman Langdon gets two votes.
Thank you again for coming tonight. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to move back to the beginning of the agenda now again. And the first item is to refer to the current head, Staff Appleton.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we do that, I think we need to make a motion to suspend the rule.
We don't suspend the rules now that...
It is in the general rule.
Yes.
So, so we can always use our electronic devices?
Yes.
Yeah. When we come down.
Let's hear what three of you said.
So it says that we can meet virtually through either June or July, I forget which. And that you can use your cell phones only in case of emergency.
Oh, yeah, I remember because I said I might have a different emergency than other people.
So we don't need to suspend.
I think Becky agrees with me. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I guess we'll hear from, uh...
The city's already got her slide up and ready to go.
We'll see you on virtual.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, hopefully you can see my screen, okay?
Yeah.
Just want to start, good. Um, just want to start with the case counts for, um, May 3rd, 2021. Um, to date, we've had 1,908 laboratory confirmed cases, 261 probable. 28 are currently active. We've had 2,121 recovered cases and 8,985 negative test results. We've had 116 hospitalizations and 20 fatalities. We've had, in the last two-week period, a decrease in the number of confirmed cases. So our case rate has dropped dramatically from 279.8 to 114.2 cases per 100,000. We are still considered in the high activity level. And you can see that, you know, whole trajectory with, this is actually from August of last year. We have another slide that goes, um, prior to that. But, um, you can see how we've come down quite a bit, uh, the first part of January and then, um, up a little bit in, uh, March and April. And now we've taken, um, a trajectory downward. So this is good news. We hope this continues. We do see trends that are concerning, so I, I need to explain this to you. Um, in the last two-week period, you can see how the, uh, case rate has changed and how we have actually seen the number of cases rise in the younger group. So, uh, in that age 20 and under. And the breakdown of those cases are nine children from six to 17 years of age. That's our highest case. And then, um, beyond that, we really have the, the 18 to 20-year-olds, we have zero cases. So it's really that, uh, six to 17-years-old, um, who have not been vaccinated yet that are getting, uh, COVID with, um, also the 40 to 49-year-old age group that's, um, also getting COVID. I'd like you to take a look at the 60-plus and the 50 to 59. In those age groups where we've had vaccination available, we have had zero cases in the last two-week period. So we need to really, um, work with our families to make sure that children are not sent to school with symptoms, um, of COVID, that they are tested if they experience this symptoms. Um, it is very serious in children. We tend not to test them as frequently as adults and that's a concern as well. There still is, uh, risk of them having severe illness, uh, multi-inflammatory syndrome. And they also get long haulers, uh, which is like fatigue and difficulty breathing. So, um, we need to protect the children as well. And thankfully, the, you'll hear this later as well, Pfizer has put in their tests, their trials, and has asked for emergency use authorization for the 12 to 15-years-old age group. And so when vaccination becomes available, I hope families will consider that for their children. It's the best way for us to prevent the disease. Um, this is another bright spot. We've had, uh, 6.5 cases per 100,000 per day for, uh, seven-day average case incidence. Our goal is one or under and then, or less than one, actually. Our positivity, uh, we are looking at 7.1 positive tests per day. Our goal is to get down to, um, 5%. And then the average number of tests daily is 16. We actually would like to see that higher, um, 28% or 28 tests per day is our goal. Uh, but it could be that people aren't experiencing symptoms as much with the vaccination being a little bit more readily available. Or, um, alternatively, they may not be getting tested. Um, our hospital capacity, uh, we do have 3.5% of the beds occupied by patients with COVID. We're able to manage our cases. Within 24 hours, we can reach a positive case and within 48 hours, we can reach the close contacts. But here's where we sit yet, even though we have good news and we've dramatically decreased our case rate. Uh, when we do our work with the school district, we're still in this high range. Um, high is 100 to 350 cases per 100,000. And then for the city, similarly, we look at these cases as well and we're in the high area. But as the trajectory indicates, hopefully, we'll be seeing this go down, especially if people become vaccinated. That's the key, I think, to making these case rates drop. Uh, it's, it's vigilance in staying with the masking, um, in certain situations and then also masking, distancing, hand washing, and then also to, to make sure that people are vaccinated. We saw a dramatic decrease in cases when people became vaccinated. We're still using the DHS, um, metrics, uh, or guide to look at how we should advise our community, um, members and looking at how we should gather in, uh, indoors and outdoors and, uh, what kind of strategies we, we should be using. I think we should be going to the next slide, see if I can get it. Um, variants of concern, just want to make sure everybody knows that we do have variants of concern. We're really looking at, um, those that are more predominant in our area, which is the BU117 and the BU1351, um, which is UK and South African. And, and the problem is that the variants spread more easily than the original strains. So again, get vaccinated when you're able and really be vigilant about the masking, distancing, and handwashing recommendations.
I want to ask a question on that, Nancy. So, um, variants then, so say, uh, an adult can get the variant and then they end up in the hospital, is that encountered somehow on the air?
Um, well, the way that the variants are detected is that the state lab of hygiene and other designated laboratories take samples of tests that have been submitted for analysis. So somebody comes in, gets a COVID test, um, they take a sampling of those tests and they identify, um, if there's a variant strain. And then they contact us as health officers to let us know if they've detected it in our area. So those two I just talked about, um, which are, um, predominant variants, those, um, those I was notified of, but we're notified after the fact. So we're not, the hospitals, the, um, testing sites, they don't test for the variant. They just test for positive or negative.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, it's a pretty sophisticated, um, surveillance for the, the disease. So, good question, though. So again, if people, yep, if people are, um, experiencing symptoms, they really should get tested. And, uh, children as well as adults, the testing is a little bit easier now with some of the rapid tests. Um, we do have Theta Care physicians. The mobile clinic in, uh, that Christ the Rock is still open, but not for much longer. And some of the Wisconsin Army National Guard sites are altering their hours. But there still is some testing. And, um, just this past week, we worked with the University of Wisconsin, Ashka Shpok City's campus and Accelerated Labs, which is a mobile laboratory. Um, they are going to be offering a pilot this Thursday, May 6th, from 8:30 to 11:30. And then they're also going to be doing, um, mobile laboratory down in Fond du Lac. So hopefully, we'll be able to, um, have that as a, kind of an enduring site for us, for our residents to be able to be tested. Uh, the big news is the vaccine, of course. And again, this is just things you've seen already. Uh, people can get their vaccine with healthcare providers, healthcare systems, pharmacists. And, um, we're looking at some of the larger mass clinics scaling back a bit. Um, they've seen a decline in interest. So, um, they're going to be completing Pfizer, uh, doses, which is a two-dose series. They'll, they'll do that and then complete the second doses out. But it looks like those mass clinics will be, um, less available. We will then be offering our clinic regularly. And, um, we all have agreed that it's really good to do a sort of a targeted vaccination, um, especially since the healthcare providers and the pharmacists do have, uh, vaccine available and can service their clients. Um, but we will be continuing to do our weekly clinics. Um, this week, we have Pfizer first dosed tomorrow morning from 10 to noon and Johnson &amp; Johnson from 1 to 2:30 in the afternoon. There are still, um, registration is still available. There's appointments available. If people are interested, uh, please let them know. And, uh, we do have those, um, appointments, uh, available to anybody. So please, um, you know, go ahead and promote that. Our special clinics that we're planning on are Ascension, Tri-County Multicultural Committee, Manassia Joint School District Partnership Community Health Center and Manassia Health Department. Um, there is a special clinic that's going to be held at Maplewood on May 22nd. And that's a Saturday. And that is specifically, um, for Hispanic families. So we're hoping that we have a very successful clinic for, um, those folks. And then, again, we're anticipating Pfizer Emergency Use Authorization for children ages 12 to 15. Um, I'm hoping it comes soon. Uh, it would be nice to have the kids vaccinated before they go back to school in the fall. Uh, just looking at vaccines, the state, at least 43.4% of residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine to date. In Calumet County, about 38.8% have received at least one dose. And then in Winnebago County, it's about 40.6. And then for our area specifically, we have data that we continue to analyze. And it's just a little tricky the way the data presents itself. But when we look at the ZIP code, 54952, it includes a lot of, uh, individuals from, you know, Harrison and Fox Crossing. Um, about 70% of Manassia residents is in that ZIP code. But we estimate that 43.9% of the eligible population received at least one dose. So, um, that's good news. We're tracking along the state level. So we'll continue to report that to you and hopefully we'll be able to have, um, additional data as time goes on. Um, again, that pause was lifted after a safety review on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And Manassia now has J and J vaccine available. We're going to start administering that tomorrow afternoon from 1 to 2:30. Um, here's a really neat slide and I, I know it's probably small for you to get at, but you can, um, actually Google this and look up CDC choosing safer activities. And what it is, is looking at the rate of vaccine that we've had and what you can do as fully vaccinated people. And what can you do if you're not vaccinated? So the unvaccinated people are on the left side and these are safer activities like walking, running, or biking outdoors with members of the household and no mask. Um, attending a small outdoor gathering with friends, uh, fully vaccinated friends and family. That's relatively safe, no mask. Um, then dining in, uh, dining at an outdoor restaurant with friends from multiple households. You can see that that's where it gets to be a little bit more, um, you know, cautious and that's in the yellow. And if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. And, uh, attending a crowded outdoor event like a live performance, a parade or sporting event. Um, it's, it's less safe for people who are unvaccinated, as you can see, and safe for people that are vaccinated. But both groups should maintain a distance and wear a mask. And I just want to take a minute here and just say that the Twin Cities Veterans Association has really vigilantly followed the metrics and also the CDC and DHS guidelines with us. And, um, they have really taken this to heart. So... So the parade that you're going to be looking at tonight, they have gone through and looked at what is the safest for the people that would be attending the event. And if you can look at their promotions, this is what they're suggesting, that people who attend wear a mask and maintain a distance. Okay, so moving down the line here, indoor events, you can see it's a little bit more risky for people who are unvaccinated, visiting a barber, going to an uncrowded indoor shopping center, riding public transport, attending a small indoor gathering of fully vaccinated and unvaccinated people. This is all risky for people who are unvaccinated, but safe for people who are. And it's still suggested that they wear a mask. And then looking down a little further, what is less safe? Things like going to an indoor movie theater, attending a full capacity worship service, singing in an indoor chorus, eating in an indoor restaurant or bar. While it's safe for the vaccinated people, some of these are not safe for people who are unvaccinated. So when you read this, or if you look this up on the CDC website, it's a handy guide to have. And actually, for me, it just says, wow, why not get vaccinated so you can be assured that indoor and outdoor, you're going to be safe. So again, it's up to everybody to help protect each other and working together, I think we'll have a good outcome and continue to see some progress. And as we make progress with vaccination rates and all of that, I think you're going to see the loosening up by CDC of these recommendations further and further. So hopefully this helps and we'll see if we can get back to, not sharing my screen here. There we go. So do you have any questions for me?
Nancy, James Taylor, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any research or any talk now about the booster coming in the future? How that may look? What is the conversation on that?
Yeah, well, it's similar to, you know, other vaccinations that we get where we need to have boosters. And what they look for is, you know, people who have experienced both doses of vaccine or are fully vaccinated with J&amp;J and have gone beyond that two-week period and the vaccine wanes in its effectiveness. Then they look for what they call breakthrough, where somebody actually gets COVID after they've been vaccinated. So far, I've heard of a few cases, but I know it's being studied very extensively and there's no recommendations as, at this time that I'm aware of.
Okay. And at what point do we hit herd immunity?
The state, I think, is looking at, you know, upwards of 80%. I don't know that we can state for sure when herd immunity occurs, but I hear that 80% is a good number. I'd be thrilled. It's important to have that. And I think of it in terms of community immunity so that we're not spreading it between one another. But it would be nice to see that upwards of 75, 80%.
Okay. And Nancy, I appreciate you steering the course for the community and staying on course. And that's not always, especially when we're in a situation as a pandemic, which we haven't been for about 100 years. So certainly appreciate your leadership throughout this and your staff throughout this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I couldn't do it without you.
Okay, thank you Nancy. Seeing the other questions, we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do you have a motion? Alderman?
Thank you Mayor, at this time, a move that we received, Minutes A through F and Communications A through H.
First out, second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yes, I have just, on letter out, Personnel Committee Minutes, Haley, you stated, and I think it's item D, that Alderman Nichols was elected to serve as chairman of the Personnel, and it should be vice. Just wanted to get that in there.
Oh, you're worried, huh?
Thank you for the presentation.
Who cares, huh?
Who cares?
Who cares?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to the public that May this month is Preservation, History Preservation Month. And the Landmarks Commission has always done a contest, a trivia contest of sorts, pictorial. But this year is a little different. We are using our website where you can go on the city page, and I believe there's a tile that's been created now on the city webpage. There is a series of questions, so you have to do your research by reading and learning a little more history. It's more than just the downtown, it's the whole city. So there's all these elements that you can look for these answers to. And the winner will get a hundred dollar gift card, a series of gift cards for new businesses downtown. And every entry, wrong or right, will get a free ice cream from Eleven Month's Life. So enjoy and learn a few more facts about your city. Thank you.
Director Schrader, I think your memo indicated that the Village of Fox Crossing was waiting, seeking further information on a development, in terms of that art pending development, their pending development, development.
Well, as presented at the last County Council meeting, there was, within the packet, noted a possible development on the DJ Clancy site as well, to the site that we are looking at, basically swapping, if you will, with the village. So that development is in a very early stage, so they did not have any real information or details about that. So that is what they are waiting for. They have reached out to the Realtors for that project, for that site, to learn more details about that development before moving forward.
For that update?
Next to Jay, is there anyone else?
Mayor? Mayor, I have my light on.
I didn't know it was sorry.
It was on. I wonder if you could touch base on item F. I had some calls from the public and they, I told them to watch the meeting, I'd asked a question. And they said they'd tune in later and if you could make some comments on that.
In regards to, communications?
Communication now.
One other question?
Well, just on the process, Mayor, of the revaluation.
I can take that, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you.
Basically, if we didn't have, this year, we would fall too out of line with fair market values. We dropped a little bit last year, but we probably would have not hit 90% of fair market values. Therefore, it was in our best interest to have basically all residential properties reassessed, by using a model that the assessors have in place with sales and whatnot, so that we can stay within that range.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, just want to note that that's required by state statute, so the public realizes we can't fall under that.
Exactly. For all those in favor again?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Take your chance.
My chance. Bob Smarduski?
You might want to come at the table over here, just so that we make sure that the microphone picks you up.
Mayor?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
I'm here this evening to support a resolution going to be presented by Alderman Propela in naming the Jefferson Park Basketball Court after Eric, Coach Eric W. Kitzman. Many of you probably don't know who this gentleman is. Few former basketball players probably do here. The reasons for supporting this resolution are as follows. I think it's important that our city recognize the accomplishments of people who, through their success of coaching, brought much distinction and accomplishment to our city as a whole. Also, many times, our city's history gets buried in the past and our younger children never know or hear about what took place in our city. The final reason is very simple, that it's the right thing to do. Currently, we have streets named after individuals who once lived and perhaps worked in some capacity for the betterment of our great city. In no way am I criticizing past city councils for erecting or authorizing other historical plaques put up on buildings or bridges or whatever. All the plaques displayed within our city help tell the city's story of Manassia and how we arrived to where we are today. Coach Eric Kitzman started his illustrious coaching career in the 1945-46 season at Manassia High School. Coach Kitzman took over the basketball coaching job for Coach Les Ansorge, who was drafted into the US Army in 1945. Coach Ansorge returned from his army duties and coached two more seasons, and then Coach Kitzman coached at Manassia High School for seven more seasons. Coach Eric Kitzman achieved a 72% winning record over the course of eight years of coaching at Manassia High School, which is pretty remarkable. Other coaching achievements included two regional championships, two sectional championships, and a runner-up state silver ball in the 1950-51 season, as well as a state championship with a gold ball in the 1952-53 season. Also, in 1953, St. Mary's Central High School was also a state championship, which is really unprecedented in Wisconsin history, that you have two championship teams from a small community like Manassia. So it's my wish that the city council would authorize the naming of this new basketball court after Eric W. Kitzman, and to purchase a bronze plaque with Coach Eric W. Kitzman's coaching accomplishments on display and install his plant near the newly constructed basketball court in Jefferson Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Hello, is there anyone else, any person that wanted to speak?
You are up, if you'd like to speak, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. Sandra DeGioe Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Actually, I'm kind of, just have a few things I wanted to comment on. First is under communication. There is reference to the retirement of the Director of Public Works, reference to the retirement of the Public Health Director, and also notification that our code enforcement officer is retiring. The first two will be going through an interview process. One is appointed by the council, one is appointed by the mayor. Common practice, according to the attorney, has been that in the personnel handbook, which is not privy to the public, it states that preference is given to in-house candidates. And then if the appointment is not made, you seek outside candidates. I think when we are dealing with department heads that require master's degree, state licensing, five, eight years of experience, it is imperative that we look for the best candidates, whether they're in-house or outside of the city hall. And I think it's very important that that language or that practice that you've been doing doesn't, is not reflected in the municipal code. And I think you do disservice by not looking everywhere. And if someone's in-house, that's fine, that's great, but I don't think we should be limited to in-house candidates. And my big question at this point regarding code enforcement is what the process is going to be. Manassia was one of the first communities in the Fox Valley to actually hire a code enforcement officer. Joe Paul Zee, during his time here, did an excellent job. A lot of people in the public probably didn't like him knocking on their doors or sending him letters, but it worked to try to get the city presentable and a nice place to live. Unfortunately, a lot of his work was, I think, roadblocked by community development and the attorney's failure to issue citations. But with that said, at the last budget hearing, I suggested that Joe actually needed help. This was too big of a job for one person. Now I'm concerned that we're not going to have anyone do that job, or we're just going to leave it up to a secretary or lower staff member. So I think it's important that this is a position that really needs to be looked at Then, on to, I'm all over the place here. Later on, you'll be going into close session regarding an office offered to purchase on Airport Road, in an existing commercial district. In reviewing our municipal code, we have minimum standards for residential construction. Minimum square footage, 36,000 square feet per a unit, minimum garage is 22 by 22, minimum lot sizes. We have no minimums for commercial construction. I think the Plan Commission should be directed to come up with some writing. There is a maximum of how big you can build on the lot, but there's no minimum for commercial facility. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to allow a 500-square-foot offie hut to be built on a large commercial lot. It's not a value to the city, just like storage sheds really don't bring value to the city. I think that is something that needs to be looked at, and I would suggest community development put that on a Plan Commission agenda to look at establishing minimum standards for commercial new construction. Then, later on, you will be voting on a blight resolution for the redevelopment authority. Unfortunately, after last night, it kind of seems sadly ironic that you'll be doing this. But I did want to bring to your attention that for the resolution, it really, in essence, the only reason you are voting on this tonight is to give the redevelopment authority authorization to go ahead without designating a redevelopment area boundary or adopting a redevelopment If the council voted this down, the RDA would have to go through the paperwork and make this more public and have a lot more homework to do, to come up with a real plan of what we're going to do with these properties. By just passing this tonight, all you're really doing is acquiring property with no plan. I just wanted...
We're at five and a half.
Pardon me?
We're at five and a half minutes at this point, if you could finish up, please.
Okay, then just real quick, on the check register, page two, there are two checks, both for identical amount of $489. I'm wondering if there's a duplicate? They're both made out to local governments, it looks like education. They're both made out to local governments, it looks like education, to the mayor's office. I'm curious as to what that is, if that's a registration, because in the budget, uh, he had listed registrations as a hundred dollars. If this is true, and we're adding these both together, that's almost a thousand. Thank you, have a good night.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? I don't see anyone else, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like for us to separate, uh, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Those are the Board of Public Works recommendations.
Anyone have others that they would like to separate? Seeing none, if we could have a motion for one, two, three, and nine?
Mayor, this time I'll make a motion that we approve on the common council minutes of four twenty-twenty-one, common council four twenty, new common council four twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the recommendations from the administration committee and the recommendations from the personnel committee.
Okay.
The motion is second. If we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Eric?
No.
Yes or no?
Yes, no. I'm really excited.
Do you want to make sure she heard?
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella? Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item four, the street use application.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I will need the motion to, um, uh, accept the street use application for the Memorial Day Parade Monday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, from seven AM to eleven AM, and that's by the Twin Cities Veterans Association.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, my question last week in committee was to hear from the health director on her recommendation for this event going forward.
Director McKinney?
Still have time.
Thank you. Um, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I was extremely impressed with the Twin Cities Veterans Association. We've been looking at the metrics for the city, um, for COVID-nineteen for over a month, probably two months on a periodic basis. They have been extremely concerned about making sure they have a safe environment for the parade and that they really want to make sure that the fellow citizens, um, are as safe as possible. So following the metrics and following the recommendations of the CDC, Department of Health Services, and our health department has been uppermost in their minds. And we have recommended that there be masking and, uh, physical distancing, and they have put that in their, the masking in all of their publications that they put out around the, um, the parade. So, um, they have been nothing but vigilant and easy to work with. And I'm, I'm very grateful that they have taken the time and energy to really think this through and do it in a safe manner. Um, at this point, I feel confident. However, at our meeting on Friday, we said if anything should change, uh, we, we would get back together and think this through even further. Um, as things are going on right now, and as you saw tonight, the CDC has made recommendations for both people who are fully vaccinated and vaccinated, and, uh, masks and physical distancing are recommended for an outdoor event like a parade for either those who are fully vaccinated or not. So that is what the, the, uh, Twin Cities Veterans Association has done, and they are following that to a T. Now, hopefully, our community, out of respect, will make sure they comply with those requests. Um, and I feel confident it will be a safe and fun activity and back to a sense of normality with the parade.
Thank you, Director McKinney. I just felt it was really important for everyone, not only in this meeting, but the folks listening to this meeting, uh, next week, when it's aired on television, to hear that directly from you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to mention, while I can't endorse, I can support their decisions and make sure that they follow the guidance, and they have been.
No further discussion? If we give a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
The motion for item five?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion that we accept and award the contract unit number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. That's for the public protection facility roof replacement, um, to quali- to quality roofing ink in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
I'll second that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item six.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion that we accept the payment to Summers Construction Company, contract unit number twenty twenty-one dash zero six. That's for the Baldwin Street reconstruction in the amount of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars, seventy-five cents. Payment number one.
I'll second that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols? Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item seven.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion that we accept the change order for Myron Construction Company Inc., contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero six. That's for the public works facility construction project, and that's a deduct of four hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-nine cents. Change order number nineteen.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Take us longer. It didn't work.
We have a motion for item eight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion that we accept the payment Myron Construction Company Inc., contract unit number twenty twenty dash zero six. That's for the public, public works facility construction project in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, ninety-five cents. Payment number thirteen.
I'll second that, Mayor.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of April sixteenth through April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of two million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and one cent.
I'll second it.
The motion is second. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
For Jennifer, if you could address, uh, the checks that were asked by Ms. Taylor.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
These were actually not courses for the mayor. They were for the clerk and the deputy clerk to attend the clerk's institute.
Thank you.
Uh, she just arrived. Just, Taylor was gone.
Oh.
I might want to just repeat that. Sure. The payments for four hundred and eighty-nine dollars were for the clerk and the deputy clerk to attend the clerk's institute.
Any other questions? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella? Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item two.
Yes, Mayor.
On the motion?
I'll approve the beverage operator license application for the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it.
The motion is second. Any discussion? If we give a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
If it's your pleasure, we could do item three and item four together or separately. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to do, uh, number three and four, class B and class B liquor license application for LPRP O Menasha LLC DBA as LGRP O Menasha Antonio Sandoval, agent for the premise at eight ninety Lake Park Road, Menasha for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one licensing year. Outdoor surf permit for Antonio Sandoval, DBA Al, Hell, Arprio, Menasha LLC for the premise at eight ninety Lake Park Road for the twenty twenty-one licensing year.
I'll second that.
The motion is second. Any discussion? This is for the former search building.
Mm-hmm.
You're opening up on me, that's, I believe.
Perfect. Seek the denial. We could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tomgady?
Aye.
Alderman Tedgady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item six is a consideration of blighted properties. Director Schrader, did you want to explain this before we?
Yeah, I certainly did. Uh, so, uh, what's part of the common council today is a consideration like three separate properties. Um, and what that means is, is basically commencing the process to look at the existing condition of these. There's no indication that, um, any type of acquisition type, no type of approval. Um, these have not been discussed, um, specifically by the authority. Um, there, it was brought up at one point, um, on the agenda last year in calendar year twenty twenty regarding the lighting property, but, uh, again, no action was taken. Uh, so what we are looking at is, um, in order to blight a property, there's, uh, certain requirements by state statutes, including, uh, public hearing process, resolutions, um, and also determination, um, uh, of these, uh, properties to actually meet the criteria and to be blighted. Um, so because of that, being a, a lengthy process, um, and the, uh, just, uh, in consideration for the, um, notifications and property orders, you do have to know, or you do have to know them twenty days in advance of a public hearing. Uh, so again, there's, there's some lengthy process there that goes along with that. So with this, that, um, just wanted to bring these properties up now, um, to basically commence the, the process. We knew these, and these, uh, three properties are in the current condition that, uh, um, basically, like, you know, we feel they need the criteria of blight. Um, and we knew, um, we have been working with several developers, um, and interested parties on, on the whole level, um, well, it's kind of that, just in general, that overall corridor, including the, um, railroad spur that cuts through. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of, uh, conversations that are ongoing. It certainly is unfortunate what, uh, what took place, um, last night. Um, luckily, I got, uh, Chief sitting next to me to keep me safe, um, but, uh, again, it's, it's very unfortunate because we, we were working diligently over the last several years with several interested, um, redevelopment, uh, investors to look at reinvesting in that property. Um, with this, uh, current condition, it really sets us back even farther. Um, so it is very, very unfortunate, not only to lose the history, um, but also, also the time of how we, uh, can move forward in this redevelopment. So again, we do not have, uh, redevelopment plan to date. Um, there was a downtown vision plan, which did call for, again, the lighting mill to be redeveloped. Um, it was renamed for historic preservation purposes. Um, there is also a little bit of additional detail regarding three thirty-six A Street within the, uh, within the metal. Uh, basically, we are looking at, um, uh, using strong neighborhood funds, if that property is blighted, to work with the property owner to actually acquire that property, um, raise it, uh, clean it, and, and get it back on the tax roll or sell it to, uh, an interested party that can, uh, construct a new single-family house on that. So again, this is not giving us complete authority to do that, um, to go out and acquire it, um, but basically just commence that process. So again, just a consideration of blight. So, um, we would have to have, again, regulations come back two, two years, and we have to be noted as well as a public hearing, uh, in order to do that. Uh, just, but just again, um, in consideration of time and where we were at with several of these projects, um, we, we thought it best to bring this up ahead of time, but we weren't losing time on the back end when a development may actually be key and ready to go. So there is a, a recommended motion within the, within the actual, um...
So what Director Schrader is asking for is, are we interested in going through the process of lighting these properties or not? If you are, you would go through the process and bring those additional materials back. If you're not, we don't want to spend a, a pretty large amount of staff time to do that. So we'd rather do something.
Alderman Sevenick?
Waiting for that big, that big check. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, go along with staff recommendation that common council, uh, consider and have consideration of blight pursuit to, uh, state statute sixty-six point one, three, 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 parent five, parent C, two.
parent five, parent C, two, Wisconsin State statute to hold a public hearing to determine if the following properties to be blighted. Three thirty-six eighth street parcel two dash zero, zero, five, five, zero, dash, zero, zero, and one hundred River Street parcel three dash zero, zero, nine, two, two, dash, zero, zero, and three dash zero, zero, nine, two, five, dash, zero, zero, and one ninety-eight River Street parcel three dash zero, zero, nine, two, seven, dash, zero, zero, three dash zero, zero, nine, one, eight, dash, zero, zero, and three dash zero, zero, nine, one, five, dash, zero, zero.
Your second.
Okay.
The motion is second. Is there discussion?
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My, uh, notes me notes that I blight very seriously. Um, like the process I'm saying. So I do have some questions, um, about two of the properties in particular. Actually, one about the entire process, so let me back up to that one first. It's from my experience that blight, uh, the blighting process begins in the redevelopment authority. Uh, this is the first time I recall in my time here that we're starting it at, at the common council level. So can you help me and the rest of us understand why that process looks a little different?
Certainly. So typically speaking, the redevelopment authority acts on a property and they're looking to actually acquire it. By state statute, uh, the redevelopment authority is required to blight a property before it actually obtains the ownership. Now, the city can acquire property without physically blighting that. Um, however, blighting it is, uh, is a part of the process, especially with an environmental property. One, it gives due diligence, uh, through, uh, again, review, public hearing process. Another is, it also protects, um, the city from an environmental, um, issue. So, um, in order to, you know, if there is an environmental issue on the property, such as we know with three thirty-six eighth street, um, because there is a spill on that property, um, the city has, uh, the ability to obtain an LDU status or limited government unit exemption from the Wisconsin, uh, DNR. So by going through the blighted process, um, before we actually acquire any of these properties down the road, um, it does secure the, the city's interest in obtaining that environmental exemption. Uh, it basically removes any type of liability of us actually acquiring it. So again, these aren't properties that, um, have previously been discussed at the RDA level. Um, they're not properties that necessarily the RDAs, as, you know, talked about, are looking to actually acquire. Um, in addition, I'm not even necessarily saying that the, the city is, is looking to acquire. Um, however, there are, um, even before the fire, like I noted, there were, um, you know, back taxes on the property, um, so the city had the ability to, at this stage, to go after that property, potentially acquire that. Um, there were, you know, interested developers. There were a large sum of, of back taxes on that property. Um, so again, if, if we were to start that process, this kind of just eliminates one of those. Um, specific, I guess, if there's any, you know, indication there that I'm, I'm missing, that you would like clarification on the state statute, um, regarding that, I, I can add that up.
I'm okay with that. I think the main thing you pointed out is the protection from the city's perspective regarding any environmental issues that may pop up. We're not aware, well, in one situation, we are aware of one, but in two of the three, we are not at this point.
Yes.
Okay. So speaking specifically to, um, the property on eighth street, um, you outlined that there was an incident there last year and that the rest, the house is uninhabitable. Now, I'm, I'm just gonna say that I did drive by there today.
Sure.
I don't see any placards, and I saw cars in the driveway. And that doesn't mean that anybody's living there. I understand that. I'm just making sure that I'm using the best information that I have to guide this decision. And so I'm putting that out there. Um, and over the course of this last year then, has there been any conversations with the property owner regarding the property?
There, um, so the DNR did take over, um, a lot of those conversations and a lot of their mediation. And this still did kind of go on to the neighboring property. They actually had to, um, uh, actually clean up quite a bit of the neighboring properties and put in some ventilation systems, even on the neighboring side. Um, so there has been some conversations there. Um, as of recently, uh, our health sanitaryian, Mr. Drew, uh, did reach out, um, to the, uh, to the property owners to discuss how they're going to move forward with this site, because it is still contaminated with site. Um, and it does need to move forward, um, in one direction or another. Uh, so that's kind of where that, that process started. So we do have a, a good indication that they would be willing to, uh, move into a development agreement process where we could acquire that. Um, again, and then remediate the site, um, and then move forward.
Have you, have you spoken specifically about this blighting process with the property owner?
Uh, I have not spoken specific, but again, this, they would get due, um, due notice with, once we would start this process. Um, and we would also, if, again, based upon the memo, um, if there's that consideration, you know, for us to acquire that, uh, we would work with them to bring back a development agreement simultaneously, um, to, again, uh, use a strong neighborhood fund, um, I think from, uh, direction of how the common council really wants us to, or has pushed us to, to try and use those funds, um, again, clear a property and hopefully sell it for a new development and increase that tax.
You mentioned that remediation has been performed, and the memo indicates that the site is unofficially closed by the D, it has been unofficially closed by the DNR, so help me understand. The DNR provides an unofficial closer, but yet we have a contaminated site. I guess, I'm not following that, so help me understand.
So the DNR did not raise the building. So there is environmental issues underneath the building, but they actually excavated all the materials around there, so the surrounding property, um, was, was cleared. But the, the building itself still has, uh, petroleum, um, still underneath it. Um, so again, by moving forward in this process, we would actually remove that building and then scoop up any of those remaining residual, um, contaminated soils. Um, and then actually take them to the facility where they can, uh, where they can collectively sit, um, in a landfill, um, that's designated for them.
And I, I guess the obvious question after that is, why wouldn't we require the property owner to do that?
Uh, so currently, he owes the DNR a substantial amount of money for what the DNR has earned. Um, it would be easy enough for this person to, um, walk away from the property, uh, continue to have the property collect back taxes. Um, and in three years, the, the property is going to continue to deteriorate. Uh, so again, while we have the property here, um, we have the property owner coming to the table, um, as well as we have, again, the strong neighborhood fund that, um, we can attempt to use in this, uh, in this matter. Uh, we felt it appropriate to try and move forward in that fashion with this property, rather than waiting, uh, three years for also the property owner to develop.
Okay, and now, in my time here, I've also been part of, um, acquisitions of properties, dilapidated homes that are no longer livable, um, and in those situations, there's always been an effort to, um, to purchase the property, um, at a, at a, at an agreeable price, always more than a dollar, right? So I'm curious, your memo indicates that you would like to pursue, the city would like to pursue buying this property for one dollar. And in my experience, that hasn't been past practice. So, um, and if I'm wrong with that, please correct me, but why would we deviate from past practice at this point? Well, you mentioned in your memo that the house itself is worth uh, twenty-four, and house and land is valued at forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that's quite different than one dollar.
And there's also a very large liability, again, on the property, uh, because of the environmental concerns. So by us taking, going in and actually just having a negative value, because we actually have to clean the property up to get it to a standard, um, that's why, I guess, we're, we're looking at it from that direction. Um, certainly, if we start conversations and, and the conversations, you know, go away from a dollar, that, again, is, is for our consideration, but, um, again, we, I don't think it would be wise for our tax dollars if we, you know, spent more than is necessary to, to move forward in, in that direction. Um, this is, this would be a different process. This is not eminent domain. If, if we use other domain to actually physically take the property without the owner's permission and agrees, there would have to be fair market value. But again, this property has a large liability to it. Um, and as long as it environmentally, has an environmental issue, um, and conditions could arise later, and they are still going to be the responsible party. So again, by city coming in and acquiring that, remediating the property to that condition, we're, we're clearing that, that issue as it relates to this property. Um, and again, if we can, if we can construct a home and the end value of this property is a hundred fifty to a hundred ninety thousand dollars, um, again, for a very small starter home, um, we, we can actually see a return on that investment as well because of the additional taxes that we're, we're bringing in from the, the cost that we actually expensed.
And I just want to say, the strong neighborhood program isn't tax dollars per se. It's, it is not tax dollars as all, at all, and that's something that's been stressed over and over. And so just want to make that clear. We're not using city tax dollars. We're not talking about using city tax dollars to acquire the property regardless of the amount. Moving on to
The version of though.
One hundred, um, River Street. Uh, I understood where we were at on Saturday. I think things have changed. We all know things have changed dramatically in the last twenty-four hours. And my question is, obviously, there is a lot of, uh, work that needs to be done over the coming weeks at that site. And, um, from my point of view, at first, let me back up just a second. Before last evening's event, uh, were there discussions with the property owner about the blighting process?
There have been ongoing discussions about how we get the property redeveloped. Um, so this, again, is a form of that, um, specific, again, to physically, you know, blighting, um, probably, probably in that.
Okay. And in this particular instance, what would be the, um, is there anything wrong with waiting a little bit, even if it's two more weeks, to start the blighting process?
I mean, ultimately, it, the council can, you can make a decision. I mean, you can decide not to go through the process at all. You can, you know, table it. Blighting, starting the process of blighting, even if it is determined to be bladed, really has no impact on that property or owning that property. For, and for all substantial purposes, the property owner has, I mean, it's now four years of back taxes on one hundred River Street, and it was even before the fire in a condition of blight. And, and now I would say it's, it's
Dangerous. Very dangerous.
A, a dangerous, imminent dangerous property there. Um, that, again, I don't see any benefit to waiting, I guess, if we're on this, kind of, circle.
And how about one ninety-eight River Street?
So this property, again, is, um, has seen several years of back taxes. Uh, we have attempted to get a hold of this property owner as of recent. Um, we have not been successful. Um, there's very little activity on the site. Uh, they have not lived up to the development agreement. Um, there are many things on the site that remain, again, in a blighted condition. Again, moving forward in this does not necessarily have an impact on the actual property owner or the property. Um, it's just, uh, a method, you know, a mechanism that speaks to even potential developers. But the city is proactively looking into these things, wanting to see redevelopment happen. That's ultimately what a blight states, is that the city has seized it and the city is in support of seeing how we can help move these projects.
So I can add something with regard to the blight designation. That is a, also a notice to the owner that the city is serious and means business. So if you're, as an owner, uh, you better work on your property and clean it up, or there's going to be other action that's going to be following that. That's the reason you do it.
And I understand that. And I understand the city saying we're taking a proactive approach and we want to, uh, see redevelopment happen. At the same time, I feel very strongly that we, uh, as a city, have a responsibility to, um, to our residents or business owners, um, and a vested interest in being in touch with them about that step before it's taken. Because at the end of the day, uh, our reputation is on the line. And the last thing that I would want to happen is for someone to say, well, the city just decided to blight my property, um, without telling me.
I want to get a
Uh, you can talk to them first, and I would expect to see some documentation about that. If I haven't, um, you know, the, the resident at eighth street, I don't know the, um, circumstances of what happened there. I do know that he is about to lose his home and owes a lot of, owes a lot of money to the DNR. Um, and I agree, something needs to be done. Perhaps it's, it's literally just the steps that are being taken. We have a responsibility to build relationships, uh, in our community. In the event of one hundred River Street, this has been, um, this has been, um, a property, you said, is that has been, um, looked at as a redevelopment site for years and that you've had some interested, um, developers, but nothing came to fruition. And yet, we hadn't entered into a conversation with that property owner about blight and about lighting that property. And here we are today talking about it, and to me, that's salt. River Street, I do think a little differently about that because there is a development agreement in place that has not been, uh, lived up to for, I can't say how many years, five, six years? It's been a while. So that is a little bit different situation, um, for me as I evaluate these considerations. Having said that, uh, I'm going to yield the floor and listen to what other folks might have to say.
And I want to very clearly just, just note, the exact details of blight may or not have been noted with the waiting property owner, but we've had lots of conversations. I have conversed with that property owner several, several dozens of times over the last year about how we move this redevelopment site forward. Um, I think all of us understand the current condition of the property. I don't think this is a, uh, you know, not, I, I don't think this is a salty move, um, by the, by the city's standpoint. Um, in addition, it's a little bit of a, again, chicken and the egg. Uh, you go back to that reference, um, you know, if, if staff having the conversation of considering, talking to the property owner about blighting it just for the county council, well then it's, you know, we, we should have talked to the county council and said, yeah, we're going to move forward. And again, follow due process required by state statute to notify that property owner. Um, and I think that's where, that's where we're at here.
Have a turn?
Yeah, um, I'd just like to say, um, for Alderman Nichols, um, that's my district. I know that house very, very well. Um, I've known past owners in that house. I've been in that house, and, um, it's not good. Uh, Alderman Nichols and Rappella said they drove by it. You don't see anything driving by it because everything is still in the ground underneath the house. And in fact, the leak affected the next door neighbor. And this owner owes, owes the DNR for that because the DNR had to go in and take care of the smell in their basement. And so he owns, owes money for that also. So that leak was spread widely. And they, yes, like, uh, Sam Schrader said, they cleaned up around the house and the next door neighbor's basement, which they had to do a lot of work uh, to, uh, keep the smell from coming in. And underneath the house, we don't know how bad that is. We know it's bad, but we don't know the severity of it. And that's going to have to be taken care of once the house even comes down. Because there's that, uh, it's just not, it's just not around the house, it's underneath the house. So I know that house very, very well, and, um, uh, that's just my, my viewpoint I wanted to share, share with you, you two guys that, you know, driving by, you don't see, you don't see anything. It's all, all underground, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, I was just surprised people were still living there.
Well, not anymore.
There are two cars there, so that's a
Neither there, maybe he parks from there. Oh, there's nobody living there. Okay, fair enough. Okay, so, all right, thank you.
I mean, Stan's got two cars, that's, he lives there, I mean.
Okay, but anyway, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I, I kind of understand where Becky's coming from a little bit. She's very concerned about property rights. But there are other rights too and other commitments that people need to make. People need to follow the law, and people keep skirting the law. And then when they do that, this is the kind of garbage you get in our community, and I want to prevent that. When you have a business, you should take care of your business. If your business fails or whatever, you should have a plan B to take care of, uh, whatever properties you might have. And when you have agreements, you should honor those agreements. And when you don't, well then, the city needs to do what it needs to do to protect its citizens. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote yes on this. And I respect the Community Development Department bringing this forward so Manasha can start, in these pockets in our community, start cleaning them up so we can be the gem of the valley, because we're getting there. And, uh, these are just baby steps to get there. I'd like to call a question, let's vote.
Any objection?
Mayor, I had a comment.
So Alderman Sevenix called a question, we'll have to have a roll call, I'll vote, I'm calling the question at this point.
Stan, would you let the other council members, uh, ask a question?
I didn't see your light on or anything, you just have
It's been, it's been on the whole time.
The mayor's running a meeting.
Our rule states that when someone calls a question, if there's objection, that we would have a roll call vote. And if there's a two-thirds vote, we would call the question. If it is not a two-thirds vote to call the question, then we would allow more conversation. So if you vote yes, you're stopping discussion at this point.
And is that debatable?
No.
Alderman Langdon?
I
Alderman Schmidt?
I
Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
I
Alderman Nichols?
Nay
Alderman Taylor?
It's too bad we don't let council member ask questions. Hey, it's being abused.
This is not debatable?
Out of order.
Point of order? Is your point of order, Alderman?
This is not debatable. Questions cannot be asked when the point
I agree.
Call, call the question was by an Alderman.
I agree.
I was not asking a question.
Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to, I'd like to vote.
Um, I'd like to separate the items.
We haven't finished voting.
Yeah, we're going to vote. Alderman Sevenix still here?
Sorry.
Did James say something?
Alderman Sevenix?
I
Motion carries?
Motion carries six-two. That means the question is called, and we would take a vote on the motion that's on the floor.
Mayor, I'd like to separate the items.
Why are you doing this? Uh, the items could be separated, which items do you want separated?
All three.
They're going to separate in thirds, okay.
Thank you.
For, 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 you know what she had asked for then?
Did you just clarify?
Sir, so, so we would take three votes. One on the three thirty-six Eighth Street parcel, one on the two one hundred River Street parcels, and one on the three one ninety-eight River Street parcels.
Thank you.
And there would be no debate because we called the question.
Alderman Langdon? Alderman Langdon? I'm not able to hear anyone, if you're speaking. Alderman Langdon?
I can hear you if you're talking.
Okay, I couldn't hear you for a second either, so Alderman Langdon? I'm still not hearing anyone.
Really? No?
Yeah, I didn't hear anyone for a second there. Alderman Langdon?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Alderman Langdon?
Nay
Hold on, which motion are we?
No, no, she's separating now. So
Now we're going to vote on each one.
We're going to be voting on each one.
When you should proceed with, um, moving to blight.
No, our, our rules state that any Alderman can request items to be separated, okay? So the motion that's on the floor right now is, should we direct, direct the Community Development Department to, if I can find
Start the process.
Start the process on Eighth Street property.
Eighth Street.
Yes.
So we're taking them individually?
So this is, should we start the blight process on the Eighth Street property?
Okay. I
Well, we don't know which one yet.
This is Eighth Street.
This is Eighth Street.
Alderman Schmidt?
I
Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
I
Alderman Nichols?
Nay
Alderman Taylor?
Nay
Alderman Sevenix?
I
Motion carries six-two?
Uh, we would be voting on the one hundred River Street. There's two parcels on that one.
Alderman Langdon?
I
Alderman Schmidt?
I
Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
Nay
What was that?
I
Alderman Nichols?
Nay
Alderman Taylor?
Nay
Alderman Sevenix?
I
Motion carries six-two?
And this would be on the one ninety-eight River Street parcels, I believe there's three of those, correct?
Yes
There's three parcels. For, for, for?
Alderman Langdon?
I
Alderman Schmidt?
I
Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
I
Alderman Nichols?
I
Alderman Taylor?
I
Alderman Sevenix?
I
Motion carries eight-zero.
Okay, item, K is ordinances and resolutions, and we should make motion.
Uh, resolution number one, uh, R twenty-three twenty-one, a resolution in appreciation for being outstanding coach and teacher at Manasha High School. Eric Kitzman won state titles in baseball in nineteen fifty and basketball in nineteen fifty-three, introduced by Alderman Rappella. Second
Second
Motion is second by Alderman Grady, any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Langdon?
I
Alderman Schmidt?
I
Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
I
Alderman Nichols?
I
Alderman Taylor?
I
Alderman Sevenix?
I
Motion carries eight-zero.
You have a motion for item two.
Thank you.
I guess I'll say it's, you know
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move for resolution twenty-four twenty-one, a resolution approving a property tax refund. Nine sixty-eight Racine Street, introduced by the mayor.
Okay. The motion is second, any discussion? Alderman Rappella?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so in other words, if somebody, i- if this has affected somebody, uh, him for like six years, ten years, I know this is the Whitman property, but i- if it affected somebody for ten years and they only catch it now, you can only go back one year.
Yeah
Correct?
Yes
That's why it's at you.
Yeah
That's as far back as you would have to go if there was errors that were
Okay. So that error could have been for the last twenty years, say.
It could have been
But it took them, it took the property owner that long to realize there was a mistake.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't mean that the city couldn't go back that far. The only thing is, you cannot collect from the other taxing entities, so the city would be paying for all of them.
Oh, okay. Good, I just wanted some clarification, thank you.
Do you need no further discussion? We could have a roll call vote please?
Alderman Langdon?
I
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Tom Grady?
I
Alderman Ted Grady?
I
Alderman Rappella?
I
Alderman Nichols?
I
Alderman Taylor?
I
Alderman Sevenix? Motion carries eight-zero.
Oh, gee, just
How was recess committee, do we have a motion?
Do we want to recess in the committee?
If we're doing, uh, a closed session, we should.
Well I'll move that we recess in the committee.
Thank you, sir. I can have a question.
Second
Okay
Would it make us have public comments first?
Necessarily, because they may want to comment on that item.
Just if you're going
We kind of went through that last week, or two weeks ago.
You don't have to go to the closed session immediately.
Public works first, and then
All of them favor?
I
I
Are there any votes? Don't we stand at recess?